Hello. Thank you for joining me today. I'd like to welcome you all to our brief presentation on our upcoming town meeting. I'm Robert Rittenhour, your Town Administrator here in Yarmouth, so there's nothing wrong with your television set. As many of you know, we have a town meeting coming up. It's going to be Tuesday, April 26, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the Matickey's Middle School. And I'm here today to just give you a little bit of a flavor on the items that you'll be voting on at the town meeting. Hopefully, along the way, we'll stimulate a little interest in your attendance and participation in not only this town meeting, but all of our municipal affairs here in town. Now, although you're stuck with me as your guide today for the town meeting, I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work from all of our town officials that goes into the preparation process for a meeting such as this. Firstly, my special thanks go to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for their leadership and guidance throughout this process, as well to all of our department and division heads, whose hard work makes this meeting possible. With a special acknowledgement to our new Assistant Town Administrator, Bill Scott, whose efforts cannot be overstated in how he helps us plan for this town meeting. And with that, we'll get right into the town meeting warrant, which will be handed out at the meeting, but in advance, you can find that on our website, which is yarmouth.ma.us. Now, the key thing with the town meeting is all of the items that we'll be voting on are arranged in separate individual articles, which sometimes lead to people's frustration that you can't bring up any subject that you want. You have to stick to the town meeting articles that lay out the business of the meeting that we'll be voting to set our budget and to set our new laws for the upcoming year. And if you take a look at the town meeting warrant organized into these articles, it has a certain rhythm to it. In other words, there's a grouping of like articles, items, whether they be budget or capital, and what you'll see, the first thing that we try to do at town meeting is address the financial items, and town meeting establishes the budget and spending for the upcoming year. It starts off with Article One, Money Right Away, and Article One will cover those items in the current budget for this fiscal year that require a little extra funding. And in this year, we've run a little short in the construction and demolition article, which is a result of the popularity of the demolition drop-off center that we have. And also, we need a little extra funding in the snow and ice article, and those two items get us through the remainder of the current fiscal year. And after that, the next grouping of articles we turn to is the municipal budget articles. And these are primarily Articles Number Two through Seven, and they set the town's budget for the upcoming year. And the first of those is the big boy, we like to call it, is the town's municipal budget or the general fund budget. And that comes in this year at $44,233,329. It's up 4.3% from the previous year, and we're very happy to have a fully balanced budget this year emerging from our pandemic, has thrown the town's revenues a little bit off kilter, but what we've seen is a strong rebounding, and we're able to put together a program of services that comes at you fully balanced, there's no need for an override in there. And in Article Two, we move through all of the items that set the annual budget for the coming year. And following the annual general fund budget, there's a series of articles that we like to call the enterprise budgets. Now, these are separated from the general fund budget primarily because the revenues for each of these budgets comes from the fees within the department that the expenses occur. For example, Article Three is the golf department enterprise budget, and that comes in at a total of $4,431,908 with all of the funds coming from golf revenues. Similarly, with Article Four, we do the water division budget with all of the funds coming from the water user fees, followed by Article Five would be the septic enterprise budget, which our septic facility generates the revenues to pay for that department. Next, we have another grouping of two articles, which are the educational articles, starting with Article Six, which will vote on approving the Dennis-Yarmouth Regional School District budget. And that comes in at a total of $39,792,435. It's only up a little over 1% from the previous year, and that comes as very good news for the taxpayers and the voters, and we had a good process with the budget this year, the officials from the school department and the Board of Selectmen, I felt, had a high level of communication, and we have a lot of confidence in the school budget this year, and there's been a strong recommendation from the Selectmen to approve that budget. After Article Six, we move into the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District budget, and Cape Cod Tech comes in at $4,183,543, slightly down from the previous year as a result of the enrollment in that school facility. Again, a very solid budget, it's balanced and within Prop. Two and a Half, and the Board of Selectmen make their strong recommendation to approve that educational budget as well. And that wraps up the series of articles that determines the spending levels for the next fiscal year, fiscal year '23, and from there, our next grouping of articles deals with the capital budgets that we have, and those, similar to the operating budgets, are split up by the general fund versus the special revenue or enterprise funds that take care of the revenues for those capital. And how that works is we move into Article Eight, which is the capital required to run the golf department, and there is $135,000 worth of capital for golf this year. Following that, we move right in to the water capital, which comes in just over $1 million for our list of projects. And very interesting for this town meeting, Article Ten is also capital for the water department, and it's a bond issue to fund a water main replacement along Route 6A, and we all know that's a very historic water main. I think it was installed probably in the 1930s, and the time has come to replace that, and that'll benefit the water service tremendously in that area. And another positive aspect of this project is that it will also enable us to do some repair in the sidewalk areas along that side of the road where the water main is installed, that there has been some deterioration of the sidewalks, and with a little help from the state, we'll have the area along 6A improved, and that'll be a positive project. Following the 6A water main, we move into the fire department capital expense, where the revenues come primarily from the ambulance revenues, and there is $595,000 worth of routine capital for our fire department to maintain a high state of readiness. So that's Article Eleven. And then Article Twelve is the general fund, various departmental capital expenses, and also embedded in Article Twelve are some free cash transfers for a few projects that are not capital-related, such as the update of the town's comprehensive plan, which has been much awaited, and we also have some OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund payments that we have included in Article Twelve. And that moves us along to another program that we're very interested in talking about. On the 26th, Article Thirteen is our police cruiser financing article, and that's a little bit different this year, is we've put in place a four-year financing mechanism that will enable us to purchase six new cruisers. They'll be the hybrid variety taking advantage of the most modern types of vehicles available that will enable us to have the police department fully updated in terms of their vehicles with a payment schedule that rather than having a spike all in year one, we'd spread over four years. So these six new cruisers that we'll be purchasing will have a four-year lifespan, and that'll help spread out the payments and make it so that the taxpayers don't see that spike in year one. Couple of more capital items we'll take care of after the cruisers is the purchase of a new roll-off truck for the transfer station. Not exciting, but when you have hundreds of thousands of miles on your trash truck, you want to make sure that doesn't break down, so it's required that those be replaced, and that replaces one that has over 300,000 miles. Then after that truck, we move forward to another transfer station improvement, which is the purchase an additional weighing scale that will help us operate our regional transfer station. So that would be the conclusion of the second group of articles that, through that process, we've got through Article Fifteen funded the town's budget for the upcoming year, funded all of our capital. Then we move into the third grouping of articles, which deals with some of the general operational items that we have for the town government. And Article Sixteen is very interesting. For the first time, we'll be adopting a recreation revolving fund, and the importance of that is it's a financial mechanism that allows the recreation department to operate its programs funded fully from the receipts that we receive from those programs, and it's a financial mechanism that offers greater flexibility for programming. So I think when that takes effect at the end of fiscal year 2023, you'll see improvements in recreational programming, and our Recreation Department and Commission is doing a fabulous job expanding these programs and making them more available to both the youth and adults in our community. Another house cleaning item, Article Seventeen sets aside some funding for collective bargaining agreements that are currently being negotiated, so that we'll have set aside a funding for that that will prevent, you know, any budget overruns as a result of collective bargaining agreements that we may enter into. And another very interesting item comes into play in Article Eighteen. We're establishing a wastewater infrastructure stabilization fund. Now, that's a mouthful, but the importance of that article is that in funding the town's wastewater treatment program, what we'll be doing in this article is using 75% of the short-term rental income that the town receives to go into a stabilization fund that will be used to purchase and pay for the wastewater infrastructure that we have in town. And that's very important because, for the first time, it takes a structural type of revenue that comes to the town from the many visitors that we have seasonally here that pay for the short-term rentals, and it uses that new excise tax to help pay for infrastructure. And the reason that that is important is those funds may ordinarily have to come from local residential property taxpayers, and through this program, we're allowing some of the tourism dollars that comes into the community as a result of the visitors that does have an impact on our environment to be used to help with the wastewater infrastructure. So that's an important article that we hope to help with the wastewater financing in Article Eighteen. And sort of in line with that, the next article, Article Nineteen, amends, we also have the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund, which was initially established in 2006 using a portion of the hotel motel excise tax. And that article needs to be amended to remove the new short-term rental tax out of that base, which had the impact of inflating somewhat the amount of funds that go into tourism. And with us using the short-term rental tax for the wastewater, we need to amend our legislation for the tourism revenue to bring it back to its original intention, which was to fund it through the normal hotel motel taxes and not the short-term rental taxes, which are slated to be used for the wastewater. So quite a mouthful on a small amendment, but that will be discussing, and questions will be very, very much looked at positively on that article, so come with your questions. Moving ahead, we see Article Twenty is the annual appropriation of funds from that Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund, and there's a total of $527,000 that we'll be using for various programs that support tourism in our community. And one change that we've done this year is to outline the program areas that we'll be funding, in case there's any questions, what exactly is that money being used for? It's broken down into four critical areas. There's the special events that we conduct here in town, marketing efforts, specific public improvements, and some economic development projects, and they total the $527,000, and that's what we'll be doing with the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund this year, and that's Article Twenty. Moving into the next article, another fascinating article that will be an assistance for the wastewater financing, is Article Twenty-One adopts district improvement financing. Now, that's a new concept for the town of Yarmouth, but very simply, through the district improvement financing, or DIF, as we like to call it, what we do is establish a district for the Phase One of the wastewater improvement project. Now, in this case, Phase One is the Route 28 commercial corridor. So in Article Twenty-One, we're going to outline the properties within that corridor, and through the district improvement financing, any new growth after this is approved that occurs in that district, the property taxes associated with that new growth, a portion of those, will be reserved to help pay for the wastewater infrastructure improvements. Now, why that's important is, in addition to creating the stabilization fund, which you recall we did back in Article Eighteen, Article Twenty-One provides financing from the exact commercial district for only the new growth that occurs in that district for wastewater, and it prevents us from being required to have that paid for by residential property taxes townwide. Now, that's a very powerful and important financing tool that enables us to capture new revenue that wastewater will create from expansion of businesses in the district that is a commercial district. And by putting those funds together and putting them together with a series of other financing mechanisms that are proposed for wastewater financing, it enables the town to hopefully avoid a general property tax increase for the wastewater infrastructure. So very important article, and an important article to vote on at the town meeting, so we hope you come out and vote on our district improvement financing, which on that article, one of the areas Assistant Town Administrator, Bill Scott, brings to our community a wealth of knowledge and information, and has implemented these programs in other communities very successfully. So we're very grateful to that expertise, and we think that it'll work perfectly here in Yarmouth for the wastewater improvement project that we have upcoming. Following the wastewater discussion, there's another very interesting article in Article Twenty-Two, which establishes for the town of Yarmouth a town seal committee. Now, the background on the town seal committee is that the Yarmouth Historical Commission, together with the Board of Selectmen, it's been called to their attention that there are some historically and culturally inaccurate Native American imagery that is incorporated into the great seal of the town of Yarmouth, and primarily, some of those inaccuracies deal with the depiction of the type of housing that is used by Native Americans who lived for over 10,000 years in the area that our community sits on, and the imagery is projected as a teepee-type structure when, you know, we know that the rounded dome-shaped way-to structure was the type of housing that Native Americans used. Then there are other culturally significant issues that may not be 100% accurate in the depiction. So the Historical Commission and the Board of Selectmen are bringing this to town to have a public dialogue, to discuss these types of issues. And in our socially conscious timeframe that, you know, we live in, it's important to have this community dialogue and to determine what, if any, adjustments, changes would be feasible. But at this point, you know, we have the information, so it's time to bring it to the community for a dialogue. Again, an important time to come and participate in that dialogue, because the whole purpose is to bring issues such as this to the community, to get some direction from the community and its voters before moving ahead and making any decisions. But Article Twenty-Two is to set up a committee to study the town seal and report back to town meeting, and any input that you have, town meeting is the time to make it. So following those, that's the section of the general articles that we have for the town government. We move into another cluster of articles that are special purpose, and this deals with the Community Preservation Act, which, as you know, has a surcharge on the property tax to create funding for certain programs that are very important to the community that otherwise wouldn't be able to be funded under the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half. And these include community housing, historic preservation, open space preservation, and the various operating expenses that they need to run those functions. So we have a series of articles that carry out the provisions of the Community Preservation Act, and the first one is Article Twenty-Three, and that establishes the reserves that we need to set aside a minimum of 10% for each of the housing, historic, and open space reserves, and also 5% for total operating expenses. So it just establishes the reserves in Article Twenty-Three. And moving forward to Article Twenty-Four, we have the actual funding of projects in those areas. And Twenty-Four is the affordable housing article that appropriates to the Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust, $240,000 to create and preserve affordable housing in our community. That is followed by Article Twenty-Five, which is the Community Preservation Historic Resource Project article, and that has two very interesting projects that it funds the Friends of the Ancient Cemetery, $17,685 to preserve and protect grave markers in our ancient cemetery, and it also has $78,830, that's $73,830, to the Historical Commission to restore the memorial arch and water pump located at Route 6A and Summer Street. So another great project for historical resources. Article Twenty-Six moves into the open space recreation category and funds $102,500 to the Friends of Bass River for engineering and design permitting for watershed restoration in the Upper Bass River, another very important project, and that rounds out the community preservation portion of the town meeting. Following that, we have two very important zoning articles. The first article is with respect to short-term rentals in town. Now, a very interesting situation, although we've had short-term rentals historically in the town of Yarmouth for many, many years, there has been a recent court case with the Zoning Board of Appeals of the town of Linfield, Massachusetts, which pointed out, a judgment was rendered that unless these short-term rentals are provided for, in a zoning bylaw, they may not be legal under the town's zoning. So Article Twenty-Seven establishes some regulation and allows short-term rentals to occur in most of the town's residential districts. So that's an important article, and again, last year, we brought in maybe $1,342,000 worth of short-term rentals, and this is, as we discussed back in Article Eighteen, this revenue is going to be used to finance the wastewater infrastructure that we so dearly need in our community. So it's important that we keep the short-term rentals legal, although they are somewhat regulated through this zoning article, which does have a sunset clause, and it will be a stopgap article for a two-year period while a more detailed article may be developed. And that's the first zoning, Article Twenty-Seven. The second zoning article is Article Twenty-Eight, and that is an expansion of the seasonal employee housing that occurs at hotels and motels in town. Now, you may already be aware that our current zoning allows an individual business, if it's a hotel or a motel, to devote up to 15% of their rooms to their own seasonal employees. And what this article does is it expands that such that any hotel or motel in town can use that 15% for seasonal employees for any business in town. It does not have to be limited to their own business. So that adds some more flexibility to the overall seasonal employment situation. You know, that is almost at crisis stage here in Yarmouth, and it's important to point out that this article has been developed in collaboration with the Yarmouth Community Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce. So it's nice to see some public-private partnership developing these articles, and you'll see more of this in the future as we work collaboratively in the community to solve problems, and a perfect example of that can be found in Article Twenty-Eight on the seasonal employee housing. And that wraps up the zoning portion of the town meeting and brings us almost to the end. There's two more articles that we have, a very vibrant citizen petition mechanism for town meetings, that citizens are allowed to petition their own articles, and we have, the first of those is a polystyrene reduction bylaw that has been petitioned by the town's Solid Waste Advisory Committee and Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee, that is. And what this article does is it bans in our community, it's called the polystyrene, but it's a ban of primarily the foam food containers that we've seen so much of. So it has its largest impact on the food industry, and as folks have seen, these products have largely been replaced with cardboard-type have largely been replaced with cardboard-type products. So a small number of facilities still have the foam products used, and creates tremendous problems for our both recycling and solid waste, and it's very bad for the environment. So we're joining a number of other communities in seeking to ban these foam food containers. And that's Article Twenty-Nine. And the final article on our town meeting is another petition article for a zoning map amendment, and this is relative to Seventeen Berry Avenue, located in West Yarmouth. And it would move that parcel from a R twenty-five residential use to a B two business use. And with that, that wraps up our town meeting and unfortunately wraps up our presentation for today. But again, I do hope that folks come out on Tuesday, April twenty-six, six P M, the Matickeys Middle School, for our annual town meeting, and those are the items we'll be voting on. And thank you. Good night.